We're not going to get any of that. We're just going to have to go back and look at our information here.
Mr. Chairman, we do plan to introduce each person that comes up and tell you what pages to look at in the budget book for their information.
That's what I was talking about.
We are planning on doing that.
Yeah. Okay, no, no, it's fine. But I mean, normally they get introduced and we talk about their... Okay, good, good.
And you might want to open the call to the public, just in case.
All right, let me see. Okay, I did skip one. You know, now that we have a public, I skipped the call to the public. You know, there is an item in the agenda that normally I will open up and then keep open throughout the meeting to give people or attendees or the public an opportunity to address the board at any particular time. So I am now opening the call to the public. Is there anybody in the public that wants to address the board before we begin? I mean, if your item is in the agenda, there will be a time when you'll be given the opportunity to speak. But is there anyone here that wants to talk about anything else? Well, no, I shouldn't have said that. Anything else relating to what we're doing today? No? Okay, then I'll close that. No, I won't. I'll leave that open and move on to the actual discussion agenda. And the first item in the discussion agenda is GYADC. Now, that's a queue. Go ahead next.
Good morning, Chairman Reyes, members of the board. We have Julie Engel, President and CEO of GYADC. Their department pages begin on page 122 and their line items begin on page three of the electronic file provided.
Good morning, Chairman Reyes, fellow supervisors. Thank you very much for allowing us to be here today. This is always an honor to get to come up and thank you for your contributions and investment in GYADC. Not too long ago, I gave you a mid-year report and as you are well aware, things are moving along in Yuma County. It's something to be very proud of and you all have been the backbone of that. So what has been recommended and we continue to push for is that per capita model and I'm happy to say that I was notified by Mr. Florrie that you are increasing another $10,000, which was a commitment made last year. For that, we're very grateful. And I think it behooves me to talk about a few of the things that are results. And it's not just a GYADC effort. This is a countywide effort. And I also recognize that the state has not been friendly to our counties and our cities and that you are tasked with extreme conditions to find money to do what we're trying to do. So for that, I'm very grateful. But over a five-year period, our personal income growth in Yuma County has raised by 3.7%. That hasn't happened since the recession. We have not seen numbers like that since the recession. Job growth has increased to 6.3% annually. We now have a workforce of 180,000 and we haven't seen that number since pre-recession. So that means more people are working and they're working year-round. What that has done to our poverty level, we have fewer families living below poverty than we've ever seen. And so that isn't a... That is your doing. That is really everyone's doing. It isn't just a GYADC effort. I'm proud to say that we have created some of the jobs that these people are working in now, but we're also seeing a lot of entrepreneurship. We're seeing a lot of things happen within our existing industries where they're able to expand and it is driven by the economy. And Yuma is very poised right now to be on the leading edge. Greg Levann and I just traveled to the Midwest and the East to talk about GYADC, to site selectors who are specifically focused on food and aerospace. We're on the map and this is only going to continue. So I see great things happening in the future and I look forward to our continued partnership. And again, I can't thank you enough for the budget request that's been approved by the team and I hope will eventually be approved by the supervisors. But I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. And I can leave this if you're interested in the stats I was quoting.
Any questions? Look, if you're happy, we're happy. That's normally our first thing.
I'm very happy. You've set the pace for our smaller communities and they do look to you for guidance. So thank you. Your efforts to move towards that per capita has set them on that trajectory as well. So very grateful, very grateful.
Any questions on board? No? Thank you very much. You've done an excellent job. I mean, you know, a lot of this progress doesn't come on its own. It's pushed and driven by people like you and organizations like yours.
Well, thank you very much. It's an honor to get to do it. So thank you.
Thank you for showing the way for the rest of the people that are coming up next.
Next, we have Crossroads Missions. Myra Garlet, Executive Director, is available for questions. Their line items are under nondepartmental, page three. Department pages begin on page 122.
Good morning. Thank you very much. I've been here several times and we're very grateful for the support from the county every year. We are still in the business of homelessness and substance abuse, helping people to see some hope. And we believe that we make a big change in our community. Our success rate for the substance abuse is about 60% and it's higher than that in our detox. So that's huge. The homeless were 166,000 meals and that's phenomenal that we're able to do that. The monies that you give us help us with all of the things that we do on the homeless side and the substance abuse and we appreciate it. I brought the newsletter. I hope that you have it. This was our most recent newsletter. And if you look on page seven, we are beginning our capital campaign for the new men's center. And we bought the property just south of Green Tree and it's kind of an L shape because of that retention basin. We're all the way down to the seed company and that's where our new men's shelter is going to be. So you'll hear more about that as we get into our capital campaign. And then our numbers are on page 11 and you can read those from the family shelter, our bed nights and the individuals. The children is really what touches my heart in the family shelter. And we... When the teachers were out on Thursday and Friday, we had activities for all the kids that weren't in school and it was just awesome. And we let the staff bring in their kids too. And one thing that I was so proud of was it touched me, but you couldn't tell the staff kids from the homeless kids. And the homeless children are taken care of and very well and we're proud of that. And we're working more and more with the agencies in town to get the homeless men and women places to live in a permanent for them, either renting or in some case, not often, but some case buying. So I have... If you have any questions.
Are you okay with your budget? Happy? Well, not happy. This is a difficult question.
You know what? I'm happy for anything. I know that it comes from you, but we always praise God when we get anything.
All right.
So we're good. Of course, we would take more if you wanted to give us more.
We'll take more if we find more.
Yeah, okay. We'll look real hard, okay?
All right, Supervisor McLeod.
Yeah, I just want to say, I remember the Laura Lights Rescue Mission. And my goodness, there is no comparison. What you have built there is leaps and bounds, words you would even escape as to how far it's come compared to what services there were in the 60s, the 70s. So thank you so much.
You know, we... At the Laura Lights, it was soup, soap, and salvation. And we are just so much past that. That's still the basis for us in the homeless section, but we're just... I mean, we really try to help them. And we do outreach services also, go out, try to get them to come in.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any board members? No?
Mr. Chair? Thank you. Thank you for what you do. I taught at Roosevelt for many, many years and the kids from the homeless shelter were attended school at Roosevelt. And they were wonderful and they were taken care of and they were felt... They did feel love and cared for while they were there. So thank you for what you do.
So thank you so much for your hind words. Sometimes when we get the kids in, they don't want to leave. They go out, you know, hanging on to things.
Well, Mr. Chair and Myra, I also attend the graduations for Drug Court and I can't tell you how many of those Drug Court graduates praise the mission up one side and down the other during their speaking, talking about their recovery because of what you do for them. So thank you.
Right. And just on a sort of a personal note, you know, we have a multi-family complex in San Luis that has space for 12 families, older families, for homeless. And we've got five openings. And so we'll... I'll make sure that our organization contacts your organization.
I appreciate that so much because we do have folks from South County that come in.
All right. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next.
All right. Moving on, number...
Next, we have Cooperative Extension. Russ Engel, Cooperative Extension Director, is available for questions. Their line items begin on... Under nondepartmental, page three. Department pages, page 122.
All right. I'm going to jump in front of Russ here for just a second. Mr. Chairman and Board of Supervisors, thank you very much for the opportunity to come to you, come before you again today. I am Jeff Johnson. I'm the current Chairman of the Advisory Board for the Yuma County Cooperative Extension and just wanted to give you the opportunity to... Or they're giving me the opportunity, I should say, to introduce to you our new director, Dr. Russell Engel, who... And he doesn't like to be referred to as Russell Engel, as I'm sure many of you know. Russ has been in Yuma County for over 20 years. He's worked with the Arizona Game and Fish Department and we are very fortunate to have him. He does have a background in extension and research from his time in Nebraska. He's got a Bachelor of Science, Master of Science degrees from University of Nebraska-Lincoln. His PhD is from University of Wyoming in Range Science and we're just... We're very fortunate to have him. You're going to have an opportunity to get to meet him today and ask him some questions and you're going to have an opportunity to get to meet our new director. I am the outgoing director and our new director is John Dinsmore. And we also have our outstanding 4H agent, Amy Parrott, here with three of our 4H ambassadors. So thank you very much for the opportunity and Russ, it's all yours.
Thanks. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
So as you said, I'm Russ Engel. I'm the new director for Yuma County Cooperative Extension. I've been there about three months now. So I'm still learning and still getting to know things and learning from these guys that are here today with me. So first of all, I just wanted to tell you, thanks. We appreciate your support and your funding and we could not do the things that we provide to the county without that. So we appreciate it and I thank you for all that support. We gave you a couple of handouts. I think I sent the bulleted kind of summary of some of our accomplishments over the last year out to you last week. I want to make sure you had it in front of you. If you don't mind, I want to touch on just a few highlights. Have some wonderful programs. I have some people who aren't here representing those programs, so I'm going to touch on a couple of those things for them. We're represented. We do have representatives from our, like you said, our wonderful 4H program, which is one of the strongest, is the strongest in the state. So 4H program is an awesome program here in the county. But I've met with and I've talked to a couple of you and I talked to Susan a couple of weeks ago or so and kind of told her where my vision, where I wanted to go with cooperative extension. And I want to start with that and one of the things that's kind of missing right now is the ag extension program. So that's my focus, kind of my primary focus right now is kind of rebuilding that ag extension component. I'm pleased to tell you, we are in the process, the early stages of a hiring process for both... Excuse me. A plant pathologist position and a general agriculture agent position. So I'm currently approved and started the process for hiring two new positions. Probably next year, next fiscal year, I think it'll probably take that long to get started on that. I've also been told we'll be able to hire what's called an FCHS kind of coordinator. I call... Just for simplicity, I call that the family support program. So oral health, the dental, the vision, the nutrition, all those programs fall under that. So along with that, I'd like to just point out a couple of things. My urban horticulture position, a person in Master Gardener, Janine Lane, is not here and I want to kind of just highlight a couple of things about her program. I don't know if any of you have ever been on the Field of Feast tours. She does it every winter. It's in cooperation with Yuma Visitors Bureau, local growers, and then our Ag Center. Janine kind of oversees planting, one and a half acre garden out there that's a demonstration garden. She grows just about every vegetable that's grown in the county. And then they have tours out there, like I said, in conjunction with the Visitors Bureau and the growers. And they take people out there and they show them what's grown here. They let them harvest some of that. Then they talk to some of the growers or the producers on the bus and then they bus them back to the college. And then the culinary arts students there provide them a meal with the vegetables from the garden. It's a phenomenal thing. If you've never been on it, I urge you to go on it. Get ahold of me next winter if you're interested. It's a neat tour to see. Highlights our agriculture. It's just a great program. And then one of the other neat things from that, like I said, she has an acre and a half garden out there. At the end of the season, she uses her master gardeners as volunteers and they go out and they harvest everything that's left. And this year, she harvested and we were able to provide over 15,000 pounds of vegetables to the food bank. I think that was pretty phenomenal. So along with that, the other programs that aren't represented here are... I have a couple of oral health programs. And so between those two programs, they provided dental screenings to over 4,000 youth in Yuma County. And then they also provided some preventive treatments for kids that needed it. They provide both sealants to provide... Or to prevent cavities in the molars and they also provide fluoride treatment. So those two programs are also, you know, just phenomenal and we couldn't do these things without your guys' support. So I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I'm going to let the others talk here a little bit. Mr. Dinsmore here is going to take over and be the Chair of my Advisory Committee. So I look forward to working with him for several years now.
In order to allow our 4H program to have enough time, I'll keep my comments short, but it is...
Start the club, please.
It is an honor to meet with you and I appreciate it. And it is a blessing as well to know that I don't need to go too in-depth to talk to you about the importance of our agriculture in this community because every one of you have fought for it and understand the value of it. If I may just share real briefly, the mission of our Cooperative Extension is to engage with people through applied research and education to improve the lives, families, communities, the environment, and the economies in Arizona and beyond. Having said that, in a study that was presented at the end of last year through the University of Arizona, it is being discussed that ag has an impact on the state of Arizona at roughly $4.3 billion. Our Yuma County vegetable production alone is hovering right around $2 billion. That does not include our summer crops like all of our various melons, our alfalfa that is often exported out into China, much of our Sudan grass that goes to Japan. I've got five children at home, five potential fifth-generation farmers. It's a blessing to know that as a fourth-generation farmer, the Cooperative Extension has directly impacted our family farm for years. To know that we have the ability to have a foreman with us for 35 years and our other foreman's been with us for nearing 30 years. It's because of programs like the Cooperative Extension that we can rely on heavily. One year, we had an issue where sclerotinia was so bad in this valley, it was airborne. We thought, could we actually have airborne sclerotinia in cauliflower? There's no way. We made a quick phone call to our Cooperative Extension to prove ourselves wrong. They did a quick study, got back to us. We actually had airborne sclerotinia in our cauliflower because of the quick response in the Cooperative Extension. That's just one example, but I just wanted to tell you that these funds are more than appreciated. We understand that you fight for us and we understand that you know the value of agriculture in this community and we ask you to continue to allow us to visit with you and just keep us at the forefront. As I once heard that if we're not at the table, we're on the menu. And so we just appreciate being able to discuss the importance of that. And now I'd like to yield my time to Ms. Amy Parrott, please.
Thank you. Thank you, John. My name is Amy Parrott and I'm the 4H Development Agent. I have the best job ever. We are incredibly grateful for your support. You guys found one of our positions. And I could stand up and talk for the next couple of minutes, but I brought some really great spokespeople. So I brought three of our county ambassadors, Lane Mellon, Mason Morris, and Laura Hunt. And so they will give an update about what your funding supports.
Good morning.
Good morning.
4H is always busy, as you see in the handout, but we wanted to highlight a few projects we wouldn't have been able to do without your support. Ag in the classroom is in partnership with Arizona Farm Bureau. The Farm Bureau provides books and supplies and our ambassador team delivers the lesson. This year, it was delivered to 4,688 students. That includes nine elementary schools and 41 classrooms. The lessons include the life cycle of the pumpkin, the importance of bees, the impact of Dr. Seuss on reading, and the role dairy and eggs play in Arizona.
Can you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm Lane Mellon. I just need to say Mason Morris and Laura.
Well, we need to know more than that, you know, like your social security number, bank account.
And my address.
That's not...
Each year at the beginning of the school year, our ambassador team makes it a goal to attend as many PTO meetings or school assemblies as possible. The goal is to let as many kids from around the county know about the 4H program, answer any questions they might have, and then give a handout, letting them know how to enroll and what to contact. This past year, we represented programs at nine PTO meetings and an additional 11 schools. For those students who aren't enrolled in 4H, our School Enrichment Program provides a 4H experience. This year, working with 16 classrooms from Roosevelt, Aliceburn, Sunrise, Desert Mesa, and Palmcroft to create a project to be entered into the county fair. The students did their best work. The exhibits were judged and received a ribbon and were all displayed all week at the fair, representing the school and their classroom. Afterwards, each student received their project and ribbon to take home.
Can you introduce yourself as well?
That's how you start. You start with an introduction.
And I also went and looked through the exhibit building and saw those projects, some of those projects. They were very, very good.
Thank you. I made some notes right here.
Introduce yourself first.
Hi, I'm Laura Hunt. For the 2017 Solar Eclipse, the master team worked with Mrs. Kate Havens, a teacher from Aliceburn who received a grant to provide eclipse classes to the entire school. Our team created a hands-on lesson about the eclipse so everyone knew what to look for and what to expect. We delivered it to the entire school, kinder through fifth grade, and then we returned to Aliceburn to experience the eclipse with the students and teachers.
Right. Good. Tall and proud. Who's next? This is a tag team thing.
That's all we have. Like I said, I want to say thank you again and these young people exemplify the 4H program. So I appreciate your time and indulging us and thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. No, no, you okay with the funding?
Yes.
All right, good. Good then. You're fine and we're fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Housing. Gloria Malik, Housing Director, is available for any questions.
Now, you can stay or you can go, okay? You don't have to be so busy. I know some of you live busy lives and, you know, we don't want the kids... Now, I remind you, I used to wear those skinny pants, right? So I can't get into them anymore, man, but good. They look good on you.
Good one. Use this as a excuse to go to that school.
Department pages begin on page 95. Staffing begins on page 96.
No, no, you're fine, Gloria. She needs to sit. You're fine.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Gloria Malik, Housing Director, and this is Elizabeth Nunez, my finance manager. Housing budget depends solely from the grants we receive from U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And so for this year, we don't anticipate any changes. We just a slight increase in our Family Self-Sufficiency Grant and we're just requesting one maintenance equipment or machinery, a utility card. And with that...
Is it included in your budget?
It's being recommended here.
All right, good. If it's in your budget, you're locked out.
That would be 25% capital out. Is that right?
He's being serious.
Yes. So with that, I would entertain any questions you may have for me.
Right. She was asking a question. And the question was, again?
The part you mentioned, I assume that's the increase in capital outlay?
Yes.
That's the 25% increase in capital outlay that is in the book, right? Correct? Maybe the budget can answer that quickly. It is? Okay, good. Gloria, are you okay with the budget? You're fine?
I'm fine. We are not... If you can give me some of your money to...
No, 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 no. This isn't that kind of negotiation. This is the one where we say, okay, you okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't ask. Do you have any more questions? Any other? You know, I assume Supervisor McLeod's going to have a question, so... But, okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Do you have a question? Why would you assume I have a question?
Because you always have. See that? It must be 16 years of listening to him or something, something like that.
Next.
County Administrator, including the emergency management, the risk management, communications, and elections? Read it. I keep jumping ahead of you.
Next, we have County Administration, to include emergency management, risk management, communications, and elections. Susan Thorpe, County Administrator, is available for any questions. Department pages begin on page 95. Staffing on page 96.
We are happy with our budget and we're here to answer any questions.
Wait, 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 wait. Hold on. We can barely hear you for some reason.
61 on.
Yes, that's a correction.
Page is 61 on?
Department pages begin on page 61. Staffing on page 65.
Okay. All right. Okay, Susan, you can start now, but I mean, you can barely hear you.
We are happy with our budget and we are here to answer any questions.
I like those. Any questions? No? If they weren't happy, we'd be in deep trouble. No questions? Thank you. If you're happy, we're happy.
Next, we have the Board of Supervisors. Susan Thorpe, County Administrator, is available for any questions. Department pages begin on page 49. Staffing on page 15.
We're not happy. We need bigger donuts. These donuts are too thin. No, I... Any of you members have any questions at all? I mean, on anything? I mean, we talked about this. I mean, just in case you guys think that this is a really smooth-going process, it taken a long time to get here. So we've talked about most of these items at length. So is it okay? The budget okay? No problem? Fine, we're happy.
Next, we have Nondepartmental Budget. Susan Thorpe, County Administrator, is available for any questions. Department pages begin on page 121. Staffing page 121.
We are happy with the budget. This includes the line items for the outside agencies that you just heard from and they're all happy with their budget as well. So we're here to answer any questions.
Um... Okay, I don't think we had any questions. Just a general question. How does the increase... How does the increase on the retirement plan impacts the budgets? Do they impact the budgets, all the budgets, at the same time? Or, you know, what kind of adjustments do you make when you have that kind of adjustment?
Each department's budget is adjusted for whatever change there is in retirement rates.
So, that's what would happen, right? I mean, the budgets are what they are, but there would be minor adjustments based upon those additional requirements.
Yes.
So, what we're looking at is a budget that may not still have those, or is it already? It will be distributed equally.
All the retirement rate adjustments have been attributed out into the various department budgets based on their personnel and FTEs in their department.
Well, but, I mean, the books we got, we got some time with them. So, and then, that's why I'm asking. I'm asking because I'm sure that the actual final budget will have those corrections in.
Yes, and the only thing that hasn't been allocated is the new increase to New York.
That's right. That's what I was referring to.
So, at this point, they had...
That was a question I had, because I'm sure that what happens is, this is not truly, truly, truly the final, final budget. We will have a final product. This is just giving everybody a sense of where they're at, because they've been working on their own budgets individually, but there will be some minor adjustments still based on possible changes between now and the day that we approve the tentative budget.
Correct. So, we'll come back on May 21st, and we'll give the board a list of the changes that we're recommending to be made.
Is that the time that we would adopt the tentative?
Yes.
On that date, right?
And the tentative will be the tentative budget, which would mean that after that particular... After that point, the budget cannot be up, you know, it cannot be increased.
After that point.
It can be decreased after that point.
Yeah.
It can be decreased, but not increased after that.
If there's any changes in the general fund after the tentative, they have to come from somewhere else in the general fund. They can't actually increase it.
All right. Got it. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Sure.
This is... My question's borne out because I was contacted by another county supervisor recently about the 911 system. So, I did some inquiries and found out that, you know, typically, if you call within the city of Yuma, it goes through IPD. You call from the unincorporated area, typically, your call will be answered by the sheriff's office. And so, the contract for 911 administration, how does that work? They were requiring how all of this works here in Yuma County. Do you know?
That would probably be a question that you should ask the sheriff, because they are responsible for the Y... It's called the Yuma Regional Communication System, YRCS, that everybody participates in, including the sheriff and all the cities.
As part of that administration.
So, there is a regional system, right? And so, we pay for our participation in that system, but the sheriff could give you more details.
Fair enough. Thank you.
All right. Okay.
Chairman, just a comment on that. Every city pays their owner that has...
Pardon me?
Every city pays a chair.
Yeah, right.
They all have it in their budget.
It started about three or four years ago.
Okay.
All right.
Next.
Okay, what's next?
Next, we have Public Works. Joshua Scott, Director of Public Works, is available for any questions. Department pages begin on page 129. Staffing on page 134.
There will be no report on the 9197 building, right?
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, no reports this morning. We are happy with our budget. You know, we have a number of funds that are captured under Public Works, and we are happy with all of those.
All right. You brought the heavy equipment, muscle. Just in case there was some argument, you know. No, thank you very much, Scott. And, you know, we take... Sometimes, we don't take the opportunity to tell you, but, you know, you guys have done a great work, a great job. I mean, the number of complaints I get are minimal now, so I want to take the opportunity to thank you for that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right. No questions?
I'll piggyback on that. You know, the staff, particularly Jason, is still very responsive. If I get a call from somebody, or if I say something myself when I call, you can measure the response time more or less in hours instead of weeks, you know?
That's good.
And I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, how are we looking on equipment? How's your equipment looking? I know we got two new graders and some trucks. How's everything looking?
Correct. So, our capital outlay in IRF for next fiscal year, it's about 200,000 above where we were last year. That's primarily for the replacement of a street sweeper. The rest of the capital outlay budget, we're transitioning from replacing light-duty vehicles, pickup trucks, and that sort of thing into additional heavy equipment for next fiscal year.
Everything still on track for your three-year plan with the roads?
Yes, sir.
Well, and just to reiterate what Supervisor McLeod said, even talking with the guys out working, they seem a lot happier, because they're getting nothing but compliments from people going by and thanking them. So, I know it helps the morale a lot whenever you're getting thanked instead of yelled at because of the shape of the roads, and so, keep up the good work.
I'll certainly pass them on. Our field staff has responded, I mean tremendously, to the aggressive program we put in place for both gravel roads and our paved road maintenance, and they've really taken a lot of pride in their work out there.
Keep up the good work.
This does not apply to the engineering department. Don't be coming up. I'll have another comment for you.
It'll be a good solution.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next, we have Development Services. Craig Sellers, Director of Development Services, available for any questions. Department pages begin on page 69. Staffing on page 72.
Good morning, Craig Sellers. What we've reviewed, we're fine with the budget at this point.
You know, I want to take the opportunity again to thank you, too. I mean, you know, some of the stuff you're doing at DDS, or the way you're doing it at DDS, it brought some good comments from people that I, you know, had an opportunity to contact or had contacted me, so I do want to say that. And I was just joking with the engineering department, but other than the 197 building, everything seemed to have gone well.
That's good.
Hey, you're fine.
And we've had...
It's done well. Better.
And I've had a lot of support from staff and division heads to bring about the changes we're doing, so thank you.
All right.
Keep up the good work, because like I said, we're hearing nothing but positives and...
Which worries me now, but, you know.
We keep looking forward to see what we can do to keep things improving.
Thank you.
Appreciate you putting up with us.
Thank you. Thanks.
For me.
Next, we have Facilities Management. David Highland, Facilities Management Director, is available for any questions. Department pages begin on page 77. Staffing page 80.
Chairman Reyes, members of the board, Dave Hillen, Director of Facilities Management. Our budget, first off, I want to say, we did have a request this year for an additional HVC staff member. It looks like that's being recommended. Extremely grateful and excited about that. That's been one challenge area for us, is to maintain our vast number of HVC equipment and central plants that we have. So, that will help extensively in that regard. Overall, the budget looks great for us. I did have a request for some initial funds to maintain our parking lots. It looks like that is not being recommended at this time, but we will do what we can for we have.
I didn't even know we had a parking facility.
Parking lots, you know, fall underground as part of our facilities, and they've been somewhat neglected over the years, and we're...
I know. That's why I...
We do have a request on the CIP side as well, too. Some of them that need more extensive work, I would consider a CIP project in and of itself.
Have you ever considered maybe trying to put it together with a solar power-type situation, where you, you know, you have shade and you have power at the same time?
That's a separate project we are working on, yes, so we will be coming to the board with a project recommendation.
It's a...
And actually, some shade on the parking lot would help with...
Oh.
Yeah. With the condition of the asphalt.
Thank you.
But you're okay with your budget?
I'm okay with my budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next, we have Public Fedisher, Candy Wheeler-Ruby. Public Fedisher is available for any questions. Department pages begin on page 81. Staffing page 82.
Before we begin, Ruby, we want to extend our condolences on your recent loss, and, you know, we were made aware of that, and, you know, hopefully, things will work out well.
Thank you. Really appreciate that. Good morning, Chairman Reyes, members of the board. I'm Candy Wheeler-Ruby, Yuma County Public Fedisher. I'm very happy with my budget this year, so...
That's a problem right there.
No, just...
No.
You got an additional staff member, right?
I did. We have been kind of struggling back and forth for about the last four years with an increase in numbers, and we have kind of played the shell game for a while and tried to shift job duties and try to figure out another way to make it work. And we've done that for a few years, but we're at the point now where we just can't make that work anymore, so...
Okay. Good. Well, you're happy. We're happy. Any questions?
No, just... You've done a good job with the office. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. That's a hard job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Coming back to County Attorney. Next, we have Constable One, John Nozar. Constable for Precinct One is available. Department pages begin page 55. Staffing page 55.
Welcome. Wow. Sorry.
Members of the board, John Nozar, Constable, Precinct Number One. We're very happy with our budget. We appreciate the efforts of the BRT, as usual, and I'm available for any questions.
No, if you're happy, we're happy. Thank you very much, John.
Next, we have Constable Number Two, Rafael Torres. Constable for Precinct Number Two. Department pages begin page 57. Staffing page 57.
Hi. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everybody. First of all, I'd like to thank Susan and Jim for their help. As you know, I'm the only... In my department, I'm the only person, so I really do go through the guidance once everything comes with the budget. I spoke to you last time about an IGA with the City of San Luis. I spoke yesterday to the manager for the court. She stated that this month is going to be in the agenda for the city council in San Luis to be approved, or... So, the only thing that I see in my budget, I'm happy with, you know, things like that. So, if you have any questions about it, I'm, you know, answer them.
The certification issue, you're taking care of that?
Yes. I actually gave Susan right now the information that I'm missing, and the only thing that I miss is I'm training. Phoenix is going to be... Yeah, this month. Yeah. So, with that, it should be done.
Can you repeat that in Spanish? Test it. Okay. You okay?
All right, thank you.
Next, we have School Superintendent. Thomas Tyree County School Superintendent is available for any questions. Department pages begin on page 139. Staffing 140.
Good morning, Chairman Reyes and members of the governing... Or, excuse me, not the governing board. Sorry, I'm not...
Supervisor Simmons. We're school boards. Got that wrong.
So, but anyway, it's a pleasure to be with you today. Our budget is, I guess I would term or describe as a status quo budget. We're not asking for anything that we haven't, you know, this year as before. So, but, but we... Our department runs, I think, very efficiently, and we live within our means, and I think we're able to provide the service to our school districts and to our county the way that we should, and we're going to continue to do that. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
No, thank you. It's, you know, it's one of those departments that, you know, we don't hear much about, but that's because it's been well-run, so...
Thank you.
Congratulations to both of you.
Very fortunate to have a great staff that work in our department. It makes my life a lot easier and allows me to focus on the education issues that I do. Also, want to thank the board for supporting the Mohawk School District a little bit earlier when they had a situation out there where they needed to do some things to allow them to repair some plumbing that they had. So, Supervisor Simmons, thanks for helping, you know, take the lead on that, and the rest of the board's support in getting that done.
Right.
Territory.
Considered done.
Okay. Thank you.
Next, we have Human Resources. Felicia Frosto is available... Director of Human Resources is available for any questions. Department pages begin page 97. Staffing page 98.
Good morning, Chairman Reyes, members of the board. Felicia Frosto. I definitely want to be able to say I have... Very grateful to what we're asking for in this current year, and thank you to the Budget Review Team, and thank you. Very happy with my budget.
Now, this added "very happy," so, you know. I don't know. We're happy, only happy, not very happy.
Is the half-position a temporary or a part-time? I'm sorry.
The half-position, it's actually a full-time position that is... That you're referring to. It came from risk management, half-risk, half-human resources.
I'll talk. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Felicia? No questions? Thank you, Felicia.
Thank you.
Next, we have Public Defender, Michael Bries. Public Defender is available for any questions. Department pages begin on page 125. Staffing 126.
Hand up.
Actually, I wouldn't mind that. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd just like to thank the BRT for the consideration of our request. Didn't get everything we want, but we got what we need, I think. One of the top priorities we're going to have this year is recruitment and retention of attorneys, and I expect to be coming before the board sometime this year, and we'll appreciate, and thank you already for the consideration you give me at that time. One of the things I wanted to point out is that we've had some issues with recruiting interns this year. We have significant reductions in enrollment at schools, law schools in Arizona, as well as increased recruitment by other agencies. In the past, we've had a lot more of the interns to ourselves, but there's a lot of competition. And one of the things we might have to look at is providing incentives, maybe going back to the paid internships that we had about ten years ago. We'll approach the board with that when, at the proper time. Our current cost per case is under fifteen hundred dollars, and one of the other things that I'll be advocating for is a veterans' court. One of the problems we have in that regard is scarce judicial resources. It's hard to get judicial resources to fund a specialty court like that. So, we're going to try and look at some creative ways to approach that. And finally, getting back to the recruitment of attorneys, been working with the county administrator, trying to find some creative ways to approach that issue, and we'll get back to you when we come up with something that's workable.
Right. Any questions?
Just one, Mike, the interns program has been highly successful. Had just a, you know, multitude of applicants, much more than you needed. What do you think is driving the change?
Well, U of A has a third reduction in enrollment, and Summit's having their own problems. So, we weren't even going to recruit at Summit Law School this year. So, there's a lot less available interns, applicants, and you couple that with the fact that the interns have been discovered. We were kind of early in on it. Now, everybody and their brothers trying to recruit these, and the interns are reluctant to leave the major metro area. So, if getting them down to Yuma is a real selling job, and it's getting more difficult, that's why I think we probably might have to go to paid internship.
We're victims of our own success.
Yeah. People are paying attention, I think.
Yeah, well, great. Did a great job getting it going, so thank you.
You ought to catch him a little earlier then.
What's that?
Maybe we should catch him a little earlier.
We actually did go to ASU, the legal defender and I, and we recruited them in the, in the fall, and told them we'd be interested, and we interviewed a lot, but they, there may be some paid internships out there. There are a lot of interns that are interested in remaining in Phoenix Tucson area, and getting them down here is, can be tough. So, that's something we'll look at.
And maybe you need to start surveying people from here who go to the school there. Maybe we, do you do any of that?
I actually interviewed a couple, and I recruited them really hard. In fact, I brought them down here to tour the area. One I'm, in particular, I'm thinking of is already committed to another internship, but she said she might see if she can't do the second half of the summer down here, so. Then, no, I recruit local when I can. Okay, Mike, thank you.
Next, we'll go to county attorney, John Smith. County attorney is available for any questions. Department pages begin page forty-three, staffing page forty-four.
I am going to, wait until he comes in. I'm going to assume you didn't think the process was going to go that fast.
I apologize for being late. I have also said, as a member of the Finance Committee for APAC, we're going through our hearings also this morning for purposes, so.
You've been at a budget meeting already, huh?
Could have a deputy attend on my behalf, but I thank you for putting me back. I got here as quickly as I could.
How's your budget? You okay with it?
I'm fine with it. I spoke with Susan yesterday, and I'm very happy with what we're proceeding with, and I don't have any requests special this week, this year, other than the usual pick-up shortfalls on special revenue fund positions.
All right. Great. Any comments, any questions, comments? No, thank you very much.
I apologize again, thank you.
No, no problem. Leave your money at the door.
Next, we have legal defender, Terry Capozzi. Legal defender is available for any questions. Department pages begin page one thirteen, staffing one fourteen.
Good morning. I just want to thank you all for, one, the Board of Supervisors, the Board of Supervisors and the County Administrator's Office and the Budget Review Team for their receptiveness and their openness to dealing with the issues that we do have in terms of retention. That said, I want to thank you all for this process. It's gone very well, and we're happy with our budget, and we will do our utmost to make sure that we spend the county's money well and efficiently, so that we give you as much return on your dollars as we possibly can. Other than that, I will entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions from legal defender? She spends the money well?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have information technology, Cliff Summers. Chief Information Officer is available for any questions. Department pages begin on one, page one oh one, staffing page one oh three.
Good morning, Chairman Reyes and Board of Supervisors. My name is Cliff Summers of the Chief Information Officer for Yuma County.
How's your budget? Okay?
It's great, very happy with it. Like to thank the Budget Review Team and County Administration for their oversight, and once again, we're happy with our budget.
You know, that beer is getting wet. You getting ready for salsa?
Yes, yes. I'm going to change the trend a little bit here. We're going to make some difference this year.
I liked your haircut in the beginning, but now it's time to change.
You're going to have to catch up, Tony.
It's going to be easy. Right, Cliff, thank you. If you're happy, we're happy.
All right, thank you very much.
Next, we have assessors.
Something had to break up the.
Assessors office. Joe Werly, county assessor, is available for any questions.
Slow down now.
You had to put him at the end, I told you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Joe Werly, Yuma County Assessor. First of all, I'd like to thank the Budget Review Team, and especially Paul Melcher, who helped, helped me through a lot of the stuff that we were working on this year. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I was just kidding. You've done a great job keeping your budget, you know, in line, considering the fact that we keep pressing for you to have a better system, and we don't necessarily provide you with the tools, you know, it's okay. We understand. We're glad that you're flexible enough to understand our situation.
Thank you.
Let us pick on you.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Would the member of the media please cover your ear?
The pilot project with the pictometry that you were talking about. One of the questions that came up was, when you look at an aerial view of something and you see that the, say, the roof line has changed, how are you able to distinguish from maybe an Arizona room or just a covered patio or an actually enclosed space? Does the pictometry typically have angle enough, or when you see that, do you send somebody to the property to actually visually inspect it?
Correct, no, when you're doing desktop review, you're seeing a forty-five degree angle, three hundred and sixty degrees around the property. Okay? So, we're pretty much able to establish from that aerial photo that it's either a porch or, you know, an enclosed porch, or it's actual living area. If we can't distinguish what it is, then that's what we call escalated to a field visit. Okay? Most of the time, the escalations come because there's trees in the way or something obstructing our view. Okay? But most of the time, you can tell from an aerial photo what's porch, what's, what's living area. The roof lines give it away a lot, but.
Can you distinguish solar systems, which is very common nowadays?
Solar, I'm glad you brought that up, because that's going to be a new project that we'll be taking on this next year. As you may know, the Solar City case was referred back to the trial courts, and now that is the responsibility of the local assessor to assess the solar units that are leased out to people. So, those will not be centrally valued anymore, those will be locally valued, and so obviously, we're going to use aerial photography to find a lot of those and confirm with the solar leasing companies that, you know, that they're there.
Okay. Can you explain how that works, Joe?
Yeah, I want to know how that works, too.
So, you see, your pictometry shows you a home that now has solar. How do you know if it's purchased, leased, and what's, and how is all of that taxed?
Absolutely, that's the part that we've got to track down. We don't know at this point whether that, that solar panel is owned by the property owner or is leased by the property owner. I can tell you that ninety-nine percent of the time, they're leased.
Leased.
Okay.
And so, are those taxed on a local level now?
They will be, yes. What the Solar City case was all about was whether or not those should be centrally valued as a utility. Okay? And they, that part was basically struck down by the courts. Court said, no, it's not a utility, it's because it's not under the control of the Corporation Commission. So, therefore, it needs to be locally assessed. So, it was, we were told by the trial courts to, for the assessor, local assessors, to do the assessment.
Go ahead, after we're done.
So, a lease system isn't owned by that homeowner.
Correct.
Or the property owner. So, who pays the assessed value that you place on that solar system?
Solar company.
That's what my question.
Right. We will build a solar company because it's their equipment, and then it's between them and their, their lessee as to what the tax payment is going to be. Just like when you, do you rent office equipment for your business? Do you rent copiers or any kind of equipment in your business?
No.
Okay, well, it would be the same thing. So, we have a lot of leasing companies that lease out office equipment to, to various businesses. We send that leasing company a tax bill, they forward the taxes on to their client.
And how do you determine that, Joe? You see a house that has solar on it, how do you know if it's purchased or leased?
Well, first of all, the first thing we do is we have the list of the solar companies that have been assessed by the state, so we, we're contacting them first, and they are reporting back to us all of the leases that they have with their, their customers. That's, that's going on right now, as a matter of fact. Once we have that information in file, we will then do the aerial photography verification that there is a unit on that, on that site.
Wow.
You know, I didn't realize that was the result of that case.
Yes.
And I didn't realize how long that was going to take, just to ask that question.
Chair, how much do you?
Okay, I'm going to follow up. I'll think of it.
Approximately, how much will, is that for, like, a panel of solar? I mean.
There's so many different.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is being crazy. There's all kinds of different values for these things, depending upon how many solar panels they actually have. And I've seen houses with three or four panels, and I've seen houses with twenty.
Yeah.
You know, there, it just depends on what they've got, so.
Yeah, it's very, very.
Chair and Joe, what about the school districts and the other entities that have their shade, their parking lots shaded with solar?
Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Pangre, yes, those will be taxable. They are taxable currently. They are.
Then, they are being taxed.
Currently, yes. Through, up and through this year, they were being taxed through the Department of Revenue as centrally valued property. So, this is, a lot of this value, we already have on the books, so it's now just being transferred from the, from the state to the local assessor to, to do the maintenance.
All right.
Okay.
Good, good. This has been a very entertaining portion of this budget hearing. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Next, we have the health district, Diana Gomez. Public health chief officer is available for any questions. Department pages begin on page eighty-seven, staffing page eighty-nine.
Good morning, Chairman Reyes, members of the board.
Good morning.
Diana Gomez, Health District Director. We are very happy with our budget, and we'd like to thank the Budget Review Team and County Administrator Susan Thorpe for working with us through this process. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We are getting somewhat ready to take a look at your tax rate in the future, to make sure that we keep your balance sheet healthy. Are you in any way, shape, or form going to be, going to be involved in that process? No?
No. Mr. Chair, the tax rate.
Oh, no, no, I'm not talking about this year.
The health district is a sales tax, so we don't have the ability to change it. The library is the one that we're going to.
The library is the one, I'm sorry, I got you, I got you confused. Got you confused. Got you. We were going to have to work on your budget a different way. I forgot, it was the library district.
That's okay.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, Diana, thank you for what you do. Your office runs smoothly, and you have a huge responsibility, you know, just in TB and communicative diseases and, you know, issues that come up, like the one that you helped me with, and you, I can't imagine all the, all the stress that you have on a daily basis. But, thank you. Thank you for you and your staff, for all that you do for this community.
Thank you so much.
It reminds me of a commercial, a beer commercial. The bud for you, well, it's budget for you.
Yes.
Thank you so much for your support.
Welcome, thank you.
Next, we have financial services, Gil Villegas. Chief, Chief Financial Officer is available for any questions. Department pages begin page eighty-three, staffing page eighty-six.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Gil Villegas. We're very happy with our budget, and we'll be happy to entertain any questions.
You should be, you are in the Budget Review Committee.
A little say on that, it's the team.
So, you're okay with your budget?
Yes.
It's fine, it covers your needs, responsible, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes.
Any questions from him? No, thank you, Gil. This is the fastest one you've done so far.
We are, next, we have improvement districts, also Gil Villegas, Chief Financial Officer, is available for any questions.
I thought you mentioned both of them at the same time. All right, okay.
For a number bag for the improvement districts. The improvement district coordinators here, if there are any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
We did get all the districts sending you their tax, you know, their tax, their tax rates to be applied, right?
That process doesn't happen until July, August. That's when I'm going to come back to you, so you guys can ratify the tax rates from all the other improvement districts. For the ones that we are responsible, we have all the budget, all the numbers.
Okay, how do we, how do we, how do we, how do we do that when we approve the final budget if we don't have the information now? Are we working on assumptions, or we don't need to approve it?
Those aren't our budgets.
Those aren't our budgets, right? So, we just collect for them?
Exactly. All we do, we get notification from all those entities, whatever they have done to approve their, their rate, the tax rate, and I just provide a summary to you.
We do approve them, but we don't have them as a budget.
My understanding, and I'm going to have to turn this to legal, the Board of Supervisors ratifies whatever rate they have adopted for that particular fiscal year.
So, technically, we don't.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for other taxing authorities for purposes of approving it with regards to those authorities, it's merely ministerial what you do at that point.
Oh, I see. So, we sort of ratify whatever they send us, and then that goes then to the, to the.
It's almost a direction that the tax bill be sent out with that.
Okay, no, not that I want the authority, it just, you know, it seems to me like that process goes, you know, a little bit different than our budget process, so I guess, you know, but it's still part of what gets collected by the treasurer, right?
By the treasurer on behalf of those taxing authorities. And I know to the public, it looks as though you folks are the ones adopting that rate, but that's not necessarily true. Only with those.
That's what I tell the constituents all the time, but.
I'm here to back you up on that today.
Thank you for being here to back that up. We do want to make it clear, we don't set those rates. We don't set, you know, school rates or some of the, some of the specialty or utility districts, whatever. We don't set those rates, we just simply sort of accept them so they can be collected. All right, that's it? Any questions?
Quick comment.
Sure.
I just wanted to thank Rachel for all the work she does on those improvement districts. I mean, it's, I don't know how she keeps everything straight, but she does an outstanding job. Just wanted to thank her on that.
All right. Rachel, it's not salary discussion time, but, you know, save that one for later. You can use that later. Thank you.
Next, next, we have the library district, Susan Evans. Library District Director is available for any questions. Department pages begin on page one fifteen, staffing page one nineteen.
She brought the crew.
All right. Crew's here.
Chairman Reyes, members of the board, Susan Evans, Library Director. With me are Lisa Mendez, Assistant Director, and Steve Duran, our good design administrator. We are happy with our budget, thanks to the Budget Review Team, and we are here to respond to any questions you may have.
The statement that I started to tell the health district applies to you, right? I mean, we are going to have to pay, start paying close attention to, to the bottom line and the reserve line that, you know, we keep. And so, I would recommend that you start with that process as early as possible, so we don't get into a situation later on where we'll regret not making any decisions this year. I think this year, we may be able to, you know, do what we're doing, but coming years, that has to be addressed. That's not a good curve. Any questions? Other questions? No questions, you're happy, we're happy. Thank you very much. I'm sorry that you didn't get to sit there longer, but, you know, it's always ball bouncing sometimes.
Right, thank you.
All right. The item next to it, it's called Discussion and Direction Regarding the Fiscal Year 2018-2019 Budget. Is there anything that we should know or we don't know yet about this particular budget? Any particular changes you're looking at, or any, any additional unknowns that popped up?
I, I was just going to ask the board if there are any of the departments or agencies that presented today, any changes that you would like to see, additions or any other modifications to their requests as we go into the tentative budget from our current recommended budget.
I wish I had some, because they all left. And I would just sort of like use that, I would use that, you know, like, you shouldn't have left, or, you know, but I really don't. I think that the process has been, the process has been smoothed out because of all the discussions and all the back and forth that's been going on between the department. Hence, while this process may seem easy at this level, it is because of all the work of Budget Review Team and the staff, the directors, making it this way. So, I, I guess what's left for me to say is thank you for making it so easy for us to go through a process that used to take hours and hours of discussion, and people used to come, and, well, I don't want to get into that. It's just a, you know, I had hair then, let's just say that. But, but, but thank you very much for making it so, so easy and so smooth. And thank the attorney, the county attorney, for, you know, his sage legal advice there at the end.
Thank you, Jim.
Making off that early.
Well, I'm not.
I'd like to thank Jim for all of his work. He worked extra hours, four hours. Thank you.
Do any of the board members have any questions or comments other than thanking the Budget Review Team?
Of course. Number one, are you new board members? Spoiled. Oh, man, it's never been like this. But the one thing I want to make sure the board has clarification on is what we discussed about, about the assessors tuning positions. Okay? If the board focuses on levy, as it always has, we are not receiving a massive return on that investment. We are, it isn't net expense to the general fund. Now, I just want to make sure the rest of the board is clear and good with that. I'm going to be good with it, because I know that for years and years, the assessor has asked for additional positions. They haven't been provided. But, for myself, the reason to go ahead and go with that is because we are way behind. We are not meeting our statutory obligation. It's been that way for a very long time. I would like to see that begin to get cleaned up, and so I think these positions will provide that, but these are not a windfall. As it was originally presented, it would be if we focused only on rate, but that's not my focus going forward, and I don't think that should be the focus of the board, because historically, that's how we've maintained our levy, well below the maximum that it could be, maintains our conservative attitude in protecting taxpayers.
Well, yeah, we, yeah. We want to make sure that our taxpayers pay as little as possible for the services that we need to provide.
And the equity portion of it.
On the, well, not on the opposite side of that, but on the side of getting ready for growth, I think that the economic drivers that we're seeing now, which to me is construction related, a lot of it, will probably necessitate the DDS, you know, Department to deal with the additional strain. I mean, I see all the zoning cases coming up, and they're all developer subdivisions. And I remember during the recession part of this last few years, you know, we had a lot more people in, in those departments handling those inspections, handling those kind of things. I think that they need to be made aware that they work on a, on a budget cycle this year to year, and that that increase, that construction increase is going to hit them faster than that. You know, you know, the cycles of construction are much faster now. I mean, for, for years in there, they seem to have been like, sort of like a, you know, two-step-forward, one-backward type situation with the economy. But I think right now, as is proven in San Luis and other places, the construction field is coming back, and I'm not sure whether DDS, you know, is, is, is ready for it. You know, when you talk about the assessors being able to assess properties, well, DDS needs to be ready to give that, the kind of service that developers now expect. And if you read the newspaper and read how the City of Yuma is working in conjunction with developers and working in conjunction with those people, I think DDS was ahead of that curve. In the past, DDS was ahead of that curve. I think that the Board of Supervisors here made it clear to DDS that we wanted to make sure that there was nothing in there that could delay a project from getting done. That's when we started to set up, you know, a process of making it, making sure that there were some deadlines to be met. You know, a plan review will take a month or two months, and if you didn't make a decision, the decision was yes. Those kind of things are the kind of strategies that were implemented. Well, in this particular case, we may need to address the issue of whether the workload is going to catch up to them.
Yeah. That's a very good point, and I think the first step in addressing that is replacing this permanent management software. It is so antiquated, it actually is slowing down our staff and their ability to process requests. So, I think that implementing the software program is going to be essential to, to preparing and getting ready for that additional growth. And we assess the staffing needs after that, but the permanent software.
My concern is that we don't have, you know, a year.